Okay, so I will call this regular meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at 7:04. First item on the agenda is the pledge, so our flag's over there.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
That's based in America, that's the republic which stands one nation under God and do this law and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone. One of you protects Kurna, if you haven't already.
He's on.
He's always here. Good, yay. John Purn is here too, yay, he's connecting to audio. All right, here we go. John Purn is here. Now we can get going. So, no public input because y'all are part of the team and you're not public. No correspondence that you got since the last time I saw you, which was yesterday. So approval of meeting minutes, I will make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for our regular meeting of June 28, 2023.
Second up.
John Manti seconds. Does anybody have any additions, corrections, et cetera, et cetera? We should be good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who needs to abstain? Okay, Bob Durkin needs to abstain, just from the police station part, so. Okay. Moving along, municipal center, the GP room lobby renovation. Last time I told everyone how Laura from the Health Department, Laura Bissel from the Health Department, was asking about lead dust white tests. There's a document that she had written up saying this is what she needed specifically, the last thing was those tests. So, Mark got in touch with Jim Twitchell, and I met Jim out there yesterday morning. First thing yesterday morning, he did his thing, we kind of agreed on which areas needed to be, just a couple of wipes, like right in the lobby, a couple on either side of hallways, a couple in the GP room. He sent them out and we should get the report probably within a week, I'm thinking.
I talked, Mark Schweitzer, Colliers, yeah, I talked to him today and he said probably middle of next week is when we'll get the report. So once he gets the results, he will forward them on to myself and to Nancy and the board.
Yep, and to Laura too, I think he'll include her, or if we get them first, then we'll hand them off to Laura. We do have a CO, but this wasn't anything that held up the CO, it was just some, one of the things, because of a little bit of lead baseball, there's probably lead in here, who knows, that was taken out upstairs, so we should be good. And then, Mark, I don't know if there's anything else, do we, is there some time period that we have to wait before we do a final application for payment from BMP?
No, I believe we're just waiting on them to submit it.
Okay, so we may have that for our next meeting, or at least beginning of August, and we'll get eventually a final invoice from Colliers and then we should, and then that will, Jim said it would be maybe about 800 to do the tests and get the report, or the tests. The report's probably more of it, and once we get all that, we'll be good to go. The little budget report I did last time is, you know, probably still pretty accurate, so once we get all those final invoices and we can put that together and I will bring it to Board of Selectmen to let them know that we're done and hopefully get that off our agenda. Is there anything else, Mark?
Nope, that is all I had.
Yep, we don't have any invoices tonight, so I don't think we have to do anything more, there's nothing we have to
No.
or agree on, so I think we'll be done with that hopefully in a couple weeks, within, probably by the end of August.
Correct.
Space continues to be used regularly, Food Truck Friday, anything else that's going out on the front lawn. I haven't heard of any problems, so that's a good thing. You know, continues to just work really well with all the bathroom spaces that are needed and they use it on a regular basis, so that's great. Okay, so thank you, Mark.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. So next is Rockwell and Johnson School, I think. So first we'll start out with the closeout update, because I think Dr. Carver, you have, either you or Jen have info on where we are with audit, getting payments, et cetera.
I do. So, we submitted our final, all the paperwork for our final payment, actually a little bit while ago. It took a while for the office of school construction to process the information, and it's a long story, but they're in the process of changing their structure. So the grants management people are moving to, I see Evan knows, they're moving to somewhere else in DAS. And so they're changing some of their formats. Nonetheless, Jen and I were able to work with them because they needed a couple of final invoices from us, and we've, the project has completely closed out, they have issued the final payment to the town. I think it was about two weeks ago, Jen probably could jump in and tell exactly the date. Do you know, Jen?
I'd have to look up the exact, it was two weeks ago and Brad confirmed that he got it.
Yes, and so the money was transferred, so the final payment is in. So all we have, we are waiting for now is notification of the audit process, and, and they do hold back, but the town knows this, Brad knows this, I believe it's 11% while they go through the edit of the audit process, and then they give, then they return that once that process is complete. I don't have a timeline for how long the audit process is, but I think in terms of the building committee for the purposes of office of school construction, I mean, you can view it as closed, because it is closed.
Well, yes and no. I mean, we still have to work on, which we'll talk about next, getting all the stuff.
Yes, yes, meaning, yes, I do, you're right Nancy, I apologize, you're doing that area in the back of Johnson.
Right, right, which is part of whatever the Office of School Construction is concerned with, but
That's correct.
on our agenda on a regular basis.
Yep, but from their perspective, the project is closed.
So now, with the 11% that's held back, you don't get that until the audit is completed and is, does the audit have to be okayed by somebody, or?
No, you, you don't have to, there's no reason, it won't affect the building committee's work at all. So, what will happen is, they will work with the town, Brad's office specifically, but we support them in that process because it's, we work as a partner in that, but they work with the town to do the close, to do the audit, and and it, I think what the issue is, is there's a time gap between the project closeout, meaning they issue the final payment, and then getting them scheduled to do the audit. I can try and see if I can find out how long it will be, but it won't involve the building committee in any way. It'll really happen out of Brad's office with our support.
Right, do they come here and look at paperwork and stuff, or how does that work?
I think it's a combination of things, and I think it's very different now, so when we did the high school, they, they did, and they came and they looked at invoices and, and a lot of different things, but when, in, when, but I think because now with the new system that was implemented, we were one of the first districts that did that, that new system, and I forget what it's called. But because we upload all the invoices when we do the payments, it, I think there's less for them to look at than, than in the past where we kept the physical copy of all the, all the documentation. But because we've had to do that all along the process, then I, I'm not exactly sure.
Right, because, so when, when you've been going and filling out the paperwork and getting the previous payments, you had to give them documentation for all of that?
I did. I had to upload, I had to give them spreadsheets, I had to upload all the invoices that were associated with the spreadsheet, so I don't know what else they could look at, you know, because they have it all in their system.
Okay.
But, but auditors do sometimes come out, so I'm not exactly sure.
And then, have you found, like, well, the last time we did one of these was the high school, so do they say then they need this much more information, or do they sometimes ask for further documentation of things, or?
They did before, but again, I don't think they're gonna, I think it's, I think the system has been set up completely different so that they don't, they, they have most of the information that they would have requested in the past. From my experience, I am not an expert, but from my experience, and I think it has to do with the new system that they, that they're using.
Okay. Any questions for, for, yeah, good?
No, it's, we're in good shape with them.
Yeah, and hopefully it'll, the whole audit part of it will get moved along more quickly.
That's correct.
So, next on the agenda would be the level spreader and the work behind Johnson, unless you want to talk about our later agenda item first.
That would be great for me, is it okay?
So, yeah, we're gonna switch around a little bit. Dr. Carver thought, since she was giving us the update on getting that payment, et cetera, she'd also give us an update on the HBC project at the high school, so.
So there is no update. In the sense that the grant has not been reissued, the application has not been reissued. The only thing that I know is just in my conversations with the Office of School Construction, and quite frankly, some, you know, I, I'm sure some of you probably saw, I was interviewed by the News Times about the process itself and, but, they, they said that they were gonna reissue the application in August. I, I really don't, I'm not 100% confident that will happen. I mean, I think if you remember the last time what the process was like, they said they were gonna issue it, and I don't remember, like September, or, and then, and then it was like months later when they actually submitted it. I think there was a lot of feedback about how grants were issued the last time. So the state has allocated $150 million, they, I'm sorry, they, they have designated $150 million towards projects across the state. There's, they issued grants, the total sum was 56 million, and so theoretically, there's $94 million that they're still going to issue when they do open that new grant process. What I've heard is that when the initial districts applied, there are about 500 million worth of projects. So of that 96,000 that's left, minus whatever's been already issued, there, it's a lot, it's a lot of, it's a lot of requests across the state of Connecticut for a small pot of mine. And so, you know, I, I got a sense from them about what the, I think what the concern is at the, from the municipality organizations and districts across the state, is that there doesn't seem to be, there's no mechanism by which they're evaluating these grants. You know, how are they prioritizing districts based on their need, based on the conditions of their facilities? So I, I still have no sense whether or not, we'll reapply when, when it comes around again, but I have no sense if we will even receive the grant. And I was pretty open about that from the get-go and the beginning of the process. Hopefully do, but I'm not sure that we are going to. So, once we get the applica, the, the application does open again, again, hopefully it's in August, but even if it's in the fall, we'll reapply. But I think in terms of like work for the build, I don't think there's, there is any work right now for you guys, because in my mind, the process is on hold completely.
Right, so now.
What's gonna be our role when, if you do get the money?
Just what it, just what, the same, same thing that happened when we had the school project. So it'll be your role to oversee the implementation of the, of the, of the HVAC project.
So could you send that to us?
What do you mean?
What do I mean? Well, I guess I'm having a little trouble with, we're waiting for the grant, and if we get the second grant, you're gonna say, okay, the building committee's gonna oversee the project, but we're not reviewing anything ahead of time. Right?
I, I guess, what do you, what, I am not sure what you mean by that.
Right.
If we're, if we're supposed to oversee the project, what input do we have in the initial, well, with planning obviously is happening already, but as far as putting a budget together, all that kind of stuff, who?
Yes and no. So, I think you, I've been here many times, that told you the long convoluted way we got to where we are. We had done the assessment based on not even knowing that there was a grant. We had some, we used our SRR money to do some initial design work based on any SRR funds that we had available for us to do any HVAC renovations, and that's how some of the design work was done. The building committee, if, if the project gets to you, and I've said this to Nancy repeatedly, and you want them to relook at design, you want to relook at the budget, that's within your prerogative. And we are not here to like block you on that, but the, the, the work that we had initially done with Cole or Ronan to do some of that pre-work was for the schools to get a sense, having nothing to do with this HVAC grant, about what were the priorities in the school, and how should we begin to address them, and how could we leverage the, the SRR monies that we had to make it happen, right? In the meantime, this grant came out.
Yep.
And it, and Jen can certainly jump in here, but that grant came out, and we, we, but we were already in the process in terms of trying to get estimates and to get a better sense of what we, what we could and could not do with the money that not only we had, but the, the town gave us through their ARP to address some of the HVAC issues at the high school. So if you get the grant, and the committee wants to relook at some of that design or have discussions with them, that's your prerogative, you can do that. We just, you just, we have provided you every bit of information, if I'm not wrong, that we have from Cole or Ronan about the work that they've done to date, but that doesn't mean that you can't revisit that and discuss that. That's, that's your, that's your, I think that's your responsibilities as a committee, just like with the schools, right? When there were some things that we, that we redid, because, because of a lot of reasons. So I don't know if I'm being clear or making sense.
Yeah, the question would be too, are we part of the application process?
No, the, the schools apply, just like the schools applied for the school construction grant.
Okay, and if, if, so theoretically, if they open up applications in August, that process starts with you applying?
That's correct.
The amount that was approved at referendum?
Correct.
Stands, it just doesn't go away, you don't have to have it, do it again?
No, don't, because it's, because it was written that it was contingent upon getting the grant. That the actual referendum was written in that manner.
And so you can't even use that amount to do something else as a part of the project until the grant, yet, until we either don't get the grant, or we do get the grant?
That's correct. If we don't get a grant, we're not doing anything.
So?
We're not doing anything, and you don't need to do anything.
Right, so?
Be clear.
Are doing that first part of the project now, right?
No, we're not doing it, we're, we're literally not doing anything. I think people think we're doing things.
I thought.
We did do, we did do stuff, we, we did our application process, we did some cost estimating, but we, we haven't done anything in, since, I don't even know when.
Well, but what about the part you said you were gonna do this summer, not as part of what we were supposed to be overseeing, but the stuff on the roof that you're saying you're gonna, there's phases of that whole big report that Cole or Ronan put together.
That's correct, and, and that, that is something that I, that I've been clear about from the beginning, that's completely separate from the work of the committee.
We understand.
Yeah, yeah, right, so that, that, that is proceeding because that, that, those projects are being completed through our SRR money, when I say our, the town, the schools' SRR money, and the money that was allocated through the Board of Selectmen.
So now?
So that, that's the, that's the equipment that does the science classrooms, you're moving forward with that?
Yes, yes. We have started that process, and Jen, I think it's on order, is it correct? Or the, are we starting to schedule?
So we have, we went out to bid.
You're echoing.
Equipment, oh, sorry. We went out to bid for the equipment for the air handle, for your, 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 the air handle, the science classroom, and the equipment has been ordered, it's taking a long time to come in, and I'm still getting.
You're still echoing, we can barely hear you.
I, I, or what, do about that? It's better, better?
Turn your microphone off and turn it back on.
Try again, Jen.
Okay, okay, all right, how's that?
Let me, let me see if I can generally say, I think what you were gonna say. So we, we did go out to bid for the, yes, for the unit to replace over the science project. That unit was on order, and we are anticipating that in the next few months that, that will come in, and then we'll start that project. Is that kind of right, Jen? Yes, and then HX1, which was the second unit, we did order the unit at the recommendation of the engineering firm, but we, that is, that is like 38 weeks, or it's a long period of time that we're gonna receive it. We don't even think we're gonna start the project until next summer of 2024.
Okay, and so there's.
Those are completely separate, completely separate.
We understand, but my question, just curiosity, is that you have this report from Cole or Ronan with phases kind of put together, and it would be great to be able, for the town, for the schools, to be able to begin to implement those, and is there a way to do more if this grant thing just keeps getting pushed down the road because the Office of School Construction isn't organized enough to get it going?
Yeah, so that's a great question, and obviously, if, if the only way that we could do some of the additional phases is, is impacted by finances. So, the, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance ultimately would have to allocate separate funds to be able to address some of the other projects that are outlined in that, in that report.
Okay. So do you get regular updates from the Office of School Construction about?
No. No. It is crickets. Like, we, and we, I, I participate in superintendent meetings with the commissioner regularly, and they ask our education commissioner, do you know anything about it? And we get nothing, so all we keep hearing is that we're gonna, they, they're gonna reopen the application process in August. And I just don't believe that that actually is gonna happen. I think it's going to eventually happen, I just don't think it's going to happen in August. And so, there literally is zero communication from, from the Office of School Construction, from DAS about when, because you would think August is in two weeks, right? I think it's about two weeks, two and a half weeks. So, at that point, we, we would hope that we would at least hear that, hey, the application's opening up. Again, I think part of the problem is, because of the way the initial districts were selected, and because there was no criteria that was outlined on how districts were selected, I think they really have to go back and relook at that process, and, and, you know, and make, I guess, you know, a stronger cases, or have a rubric, or some measurement to say like, how did one district qualifies versus another. So I, so I think that's part of the process, the problem too. I don't think they have it.
So, the two units that you already ordered?
Yep.
38 weeks out, whatever they are.
One, one. Yep.
Take those two off the table.
Right.
How much was the balance of the project that you're applying for?
Those weren't.
Was it 500,000, was it a million?
No, John, those weren't even part of the project that I applied for. Those are completely separate and are funded separately.
I realize that, but, but the portion that you're applying for the grant for?
Yep.
Did, did they give you a budget, how much you're applying for, like?
Yes, and, and you guys have that, it's four, it's 4 million, I'd have to look it up. It's a little over 4 million, right, Jen?
Jen just said it's a little.
Yes, that's correct. You guys have that information, but that's what the budget was for, was a little over 4 million.
Right.
Got it, okay.
So, go ahead. I have a question, Dr. Carver, I think it's great that you have a phasing plan in place. I think the, you know, the question I have is, you have each stage all the way along, and I think you have a budget for it, what have you. I think the concern probably of this committee is when we finally do get involved with it, the design has already been kind of cast in stone, of, you know, without us even looking at it, so it's, it's, I think it's gonna be a tough way to undo that, and that's why I'm wondering, you know, and I, again, I, I very much appreciate that, that the phasing plan has, has been put together, but is there a way that, you know, that, you know, we can get involved, or say to make sure that, that, you know, I think John probably has some concerns with the design or what have you, or some questions on the design, what have you. That'd be nice to have that, so that we're all comfortable when the phasing plan gets approved, and you know, maybe it's next year, or maybe it's five years down the line, we, we kind of all kind of pre-agreed that this is a great setup, let's go with it. I think, come back and look at it.
Well, to be, to be honest with you, Roy, when we did the work with that, we, the, the school district, through their SRR funding, paid Cole or Ronan separately to develop that design. It was, it was, like I said, it was part of a much bigger project and concern. So the, we don't have any money right now, we don't have any money left to go, say, go back and say, well, we want you to redesign it, but that's not to say that you guys don't look at the budget that you, that you would potentially have, and ask them to go back to the table based on what you think might be more appropriate, or your input that you have.
Yeah, I'm not looking at, trying to redesign anything by any means, I'm just trying to say, I just want to make sure, I'd like to see this committee 100% behind even the, the initial stages, so that, you know, without even having to really re-review it, because, you know, in my mind, we probably never know when these projects come due, I'd just like to have us all on board, 100%.
We don't have any money left to go back to Cole or Ronan at this point and say, hey, we'd like you to think about this in terms of redesign process. But once you establish the budget after we get to, i- if we get the grant,
Right.
I, I think you probably could. You, you, you prob, you could, you know, I think the total, I mean, Jen, do you remember how much we, the charge was for Cole or Ronan to do that initial design? But it wasn't just this one piece, I know that.
She's checking.
Yeah, it wasn't an incredible amount of money, I remember that. So in a $4 million budget, if you ask them, if you, if you, if we get the grant and you want to go back in, Jen's checking, yes, when, if, if you want to go back in, and as part of that, ask them to do some redesign work or to tweak what they have, that's certainly within your prerogative, and, you know, it, it. Yeah, it's, it is gonna cost money, I mean, they're not gonna do it for free. So I think that, that, that you can create that as part of the overall budget.
Right, yeah, if the overall, so the overall budget, when, when you go back, if you, if, let's say in two weeks you get this notification from?
But you have to be, let me be clear, let me be clear, we give a broad budget, we don't give them the details, like, behind all of that.
I understand that, but if, if the, the amount that you, that you asked for when you applied last time has to be the exact same amount, or can it be?
No, it absolutely has to be the exact same amount, because that's what was passed in the referendum.
But, but the referendum's only part of it.
We're, oh, well.
The referendum.
The referendum gives a total cost that we can spend on this project, and then the state reimburses us for 46.75, whatever our, whatever our reimbursement is for that. So we can't exceed that cost.
If costs have gone up in however many months?
That's correct.
Then we do less?
Yes, theoretically or potentially, correct. We may have to scale back aspects of it based on that. We did build, and Jen, you can nod on this, I do believe we build in a healthy contingency and escalation cost, because at the time, you've got to remember where we were.
Yes.
At the time, and STV was very involved in this process too. At the time, we weren't sure how much things were gonna cost, and so they were, they were very conservative about both of those factors, so that if we did have to make adjustments in any potential future project, that, that would be there. Now I, and maybe Evan knows, like, I don't know where the cost of things are, but we, you know, we were, we were getting those estimates, and that was periods of really, really high inflation, and a lot of demand issues. I, I don't know, I would be hopeful that some things. I I I don't know, I would be hopeful that some things may have stabilized, maybe Evan has a better sense for that, but I do know that we built that into the budget because we weren't sure what was gonna happen.
Yes, and and I remember looking at that document. Uh, it was a couple of months ago now, but yeah, we we had about nine percent escalation year over year.
Right.
In in that, and uh, right now, we're definitely seeing less than that.
Right.
So we saw four percent last month year over year.
Yeah, I so I'm not super duper worried about that piece. Um, but it and that may just free up some of the budget to to, if you wanna look at some redesign work.
So, yeah, the thing that I think we need to really look at in, and I I understand that part of the grant is that that if we get the grant, it's overseen by a building committee, which would be us, I'm assuming. And that I put this forward from the very beginning, once I first started hearing about this, is that I need to include in the budget an owner's rep and commissioning. And I still feel very strongly about that. I would prefer not to have us work on it without an owner's rep and commission.
Commissioning was included in the budget. So um, and I had spoken to the gentleman, I can't remember his name, but he he did it for those school projects. What's his name? Somebody tell me. I actually sent all the information for to him, Mr. Byalaki. And he was the one who gave me, gave us the numbers for the um, for the um, the commissioning, so that was definitely part of it. And again, if an owner's rep is important to the project, which I don't, you know, that's fine. We just have to readjust the budget and that may mean that we have to exclude portions of it. I think we have to have that conversation once we know if we even have the grant.
Okay.
And we did go out to bid for the design. Um, Jen was trying to call in, but at the time before we knew there was an application project, we we did go out to bid for that design project too.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
It's a technical question.
Okay, I may not be able to answer it.
We did, we, the committee did sixty five million for the two schools we just finished, right?
Yes, about, yep.
Yeah. How come nobody approached us for the four million?
Because it's a different project.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I don't understand the question.
Well, I I I would guess, I I try to look at it, simple terms is that as a committee, which we have a a symbol of very knowledgeable people, everybody's got a specialty in their trade. This is what we think we wanna do at the high school. And get us involved, just like we did at the police station, just like we did at Johnson, just like we did at Rockwell, just like we did at the library, just like we did at the high school the first time.
I think I can answer that, John.
I get that, I get a
I think I can answer it for you.
Wait, but I'm not finished. I I get this feeling that we're gonna be, if we are fortunate enough to get the grant, we're gonna be handed a project that we really weren't involved with at all, and we're only being asked because it's required by the state.
Well, that's partially true.
Yep.
And I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be straight out honest with you, we do a lot of projects on our buildings that the committee has no involvement in. We, for example, we're doing a bunch of roof repairs right now. We we are running the implementation of the HVAC, um, the projects, the the two that you just mentioned. As I said from the beginning, it was not our intention to leave you out. We happened to do the design because of some other reason, because we had the money. And we wanted to get an assessment of what was going on at the high school, and we wanted to know how much it was going to cost to fix it. It had no, there was, there was a lot of things that we do on our schools that the committee doesn't get involved with. We've we've replaced many units at our, at the the high school. We've replaced the chiller at the the middle school, we've replaced the whole boiler system at the high school um, that we have done independent of the committee. When we got the grant money for the, not the, not the HVAC grant, but the S R grant. Um, and we knew we wanted to spend some of it on HVAC repairs, we were doing this um, besides, um, so I feel like I don't want you to think that we are purposely trying to exclude you, that was not the intention at all.
And no, it's not, we're just, I'm just trying to make the point that we could, we, and I'm talking now as a taxpayer. I'm gonna wear two hats right now, because in the past, and I think Roy could contend, could back this up, is we put, they built the middle school and they put residential boilers in it, then it had to go back as a taxpayer. And at the middle school, put new boilers in when we shouldn't have to. I think, I'm just trying to make a point that I I think as a, a a lot of us have been volunteering for a long time. And I think we, and and this is only spent it one night out of desperation, when you called me that night to come to the meeting, and you were busy in your office on the phone, and I met with everybody in the conference room, just in that short period of time of reviewing the documents, we could have been a big help to you. That's all.
I'm not sure what you're referring to about me being on the phone.
The prince, remember the prince, I came with the prince and the into the conference room, I met with the director of public works. I I
With the HVAC project or the school project?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I, that may have, may or may not have happened, I'm not sure. But the point being, I can't take back what had happened and what had happened, like I said. And and you, you still have that opportunity to do that. I guess what I would suggest to you is that I think that you should actually table this as an agenda item until you, we actually know if we're gonna have the grant. Because we can't do any redesign work now. Actually budget for it.
I'm gonna kind of bring us this part to a close because there's two things. We can't take things off our agenda, it has to be done by the board of selectmen, so I'll be in touch with the first selectman.
Yeah.
And find out what what's the plan, you know, and and I don't know, if if there's a plan for your plan that you've gotten from Colorado, and you have all those spaces, I know you need the board of selectmen and the board of finance get together and say, all right, this year, we're gonna fund this part of it, and this year, we're gonna fund this part of it. We're waiting on this grant, but you know, you, I know you need to get it done at a future time.
Right, and and it's not going to be the near future, Nancy, because even they fe- they phased out that the stuff, but just because they phased it out in a certain manner, doesn't mean that was necessarily adopted, that's just their recommendations.
I understand that, I understand that. What I'm saying is now you have that, you need to, you or to bed, needs to then begin to work with who, board of finance and board of selectmen on how you implement this basis, et cetera.
Right.
I do also understand that you've done a lot of work on your buildings without us, because we're not the public site and maintenance committee, we're the public site building commission. We are assigned projects by the board of selectmen only, we don't get to pick them ourselves when um, it's a major building project. There's stuff going on in this building right now that we're not gonna be involved with because it's it's more maintenance stuff, they're gonna put a new floor in somewhere that's maintenance, not construction. So we don't, we don't need to keep going on with this. I I understand John and Roy's points about, you know, wanting to make sure if we're handed something to do, that we feel comfortable with doing it. And so when we get to that point, we're gonna have to have that discussion.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, so thanks for the update on
Okay.
Just keep us posted on audit.
I will, and even if I hear wind of a grant application, I will let you know.
That would be great.
Okay.
All right, so then we're gonna move on to the work being done behind Johnson. Evan, I don't know if you've got anything for us, because that was supposed to be done by now, but we know what happened. So thank you, Dr. Carver, thank you, Jen.
Yeah, so uh, again, we're, we're having our issues with our manufacturer of the pipe. We were told July fifth, after their first failure to meet their deadline, July fifth came and went. Um, uh, on Monday, I spoke with Peter De Scala at uh, at Sunburst. He said that they're now promising by the end of this week. Um, but, yeah, their their word is worth nothing at this point.
So So, and there's, like I said, when I was up there last time and I went up one Tuesday morning, there's nothing they can do until that pipe shows up, there's really
Exactly, yeah, I I mean, um, they they have approximately two weeks worth of work. One week of actually digging out and laying the pipe, and then they have another week of going back and doing the plantings, which will be relatively unobtrusive. Um, but it's, go ahead.
So they're still saying that, have they actually manu- started manufacturing the bike?
According to what Corin made us told us, yes.
Okay, so did they give you any kind of approximate delivery date?
End of this week.
Really? Okay.
Yeah.
Good, cuz I I drove by there earlier. Just drive by, cuz I couldn't, I didn't have time to get out and walk back there, and there's, you know, obviously nothing, but when I was there yesterday morning, I did see more a little bit more erosion and some silt down at the bottom, it being held back and not going into the brook, the hay bales are doing their job.
Yeah.
But you could see pretty much with all the rain we've had lately, where the pipe wants to go, because
Yeah, you see the natural path there.
Yes, yes.
Uh, yeah, uh, I went out there and uh, and Pete has been out there as well. And we both agree that for the volume of rain that we got on, I believe it was Sunday night, it actually held up very well.
Right, yes. And I also noticed that the um, all the orange fencing that's been put in place with the trails closed signs were just, they were there. I don't know why anybody would wanna cut them down, because you can walk right around them.
Yeah, it it seems, uh, whomever that was, their frustration has dissipated, or perhaps they found a new wall.
Yeah, who knows, I don't know. So, um, is is does Pete feel comfortable with whenever the stuff shows up, he can get somebody back there?
Yes, he he said that if it shows up at the end of this week, you'll have people there on Monday.
Okay, cuz I did, I did, like I said, I drove through about two thirty. And I I couldn't, I didn't have time to stop and walk into the back, but as I was driving out, there was a big white pickup, didn't have any sunburst stuff on it, coming in with a trailer and a little orange digger on it, a Kubota or something. So I don't know if he was moving stuff in or, but they, I don't, I didn't see it go into Johnson, who knows?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we we see a pipe, we see a pipe, a truck delivering those lengths of pipe, and then we see an excavator, I think that's the the two pieces we'd see uh, coming in.
Do we need to have somebody on site when the pipe shows up, so they know where to put it and all that? Pete gonna take care of that?
You you will be there.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, so any questions on that? We don't, obviously didn't need anything from Joe Coater, SLR tonight, so we don't really need them on.
No, and uh, I I could also email you pictures if you want for everybody else, but uh, um, Darren from SLR, Pete and myself have a text chain going where we've texted each other pictures, you know, showing each other the runoff and uh, we all agree that we're we're looking good.
Anybody need to see pictures? Oh, good, okay. So we do have a couple of invoices we need to deal with, which is why we're glad both John Perna and David are here. So uh, as Evan emailed everyone, these two, these are school, okay, and then we have one, one for Johnson, that's so the first two that I have were from September of last year.
I I can't share, I could have them up, but for some reason I can't share my screen, it says host disabled.
Yeah, she has to make you co-host, so. There you go.
All right.
So um, these were brought to Evan's attention recently by their finance slash accounting department, never been paid. They're from September of twenty twenty two, and um, I don't ever remember seeing them. The process that STV had going pretty much was emailing them to first selectman's office, um, I think Carolyn, me, and whoever else, maybe Jen, I'm not sure. I think you, Terry at the time. And then also mailing them, mailing hard copies. Usually the email ones got dealt with first, especially during COVID when we did a lot of stuff electronically. But this was during the time of switching over between Carolyn and Vinnie. And who knows where they went, or I think Vinnie wasn't getting them in the beginning, so so you see it's attention registered and he was acting for selectman at the time. So, I mean, these are obviously, we need to deal with them. So which one do we have? I will make a motion that we approve STV invoice number nine zero zero two five nine two nine uh, dated October thirteen, twenty twenty two, for the month of September twenty twenty two, for Rockwell, in the amount of two thousand ninety three dollars.
I'll second it.
Back into any questions, input, et cetera. I did, just so everybody knows, I did a whole check through Zoom documents, shared drive, which stuff's not up there, but uh, in our meeting minutes for September, October, November, December, all the meetings that we've had since September, and there's nothing, you know, we approved October, November, December, we approved everything, but not these, so they're not anywhere. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done with that one, and we have one for Johnson also. So I'll make a motion that we approve STV invoice number nine zero zero two five nine two eight dated October thirteen, twenty twenty two, for the month of September twenty twenty two, for Johnson School, in the amount of two thousand eight hundred twenty one dollars. They hold some seconds, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
But you know, we are done with that. We do have one more for schools, which is um, for Johnson, and this looks like it's for both May and June.
Yes, this is, this is the time that I've spent on the levels.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve STV invoice number nine zero zero two eight one three one dated July seven, twenty twenty three, for the months of May and June, twenty twenty three, for Johnson School in the amount of seven hundred and twenty dollars. Roy seconds, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Done. Okay, so that should be it for school stuff, I'm thinking. Hopefully, we'll have some more progress to report on at our next meeting, as far as getting the work done, like it's just sitting there. And and working back there, a couple of times I went, I think would be easy, even though there's camp and stuff going on. The access from the back, et cetera, isn't gonna be problematic, it's just gonna get done before school starts. Which I think it will, so. So, anything else, Evan?
Uh, not on the levels, but no.
And I don't think there's anything else on school. Nope, I don't have anything else, so I think we can move into um, the training range.
Yes, so training range, um, I've been talking with uh, ATI. Uh, we had a a long conversation yesterday regarding uh, the rejection of their invoice um, for the their their third payment. Um, and basically, what I was able to get through to them is you provided us with no backup and no proof that the MAU has been purchased and it or is in manufacture right now. The and that you're requesting um, funds that would then exceed the value of that makeup area unit, and the committee does not feel comfortable exceeding that amount of money. Um, and they seem to now be able to acknowledge that, and they will work on getting us back up. And when they do get us back up, hopefully before our next meeting, they will also revise their uh, the requested amount of money and invoice to be uh, a more appropriate number.
Okay, do you have, do you have, you Evan, have any thoughts on what that appropriate number might be? Like
Right, so so uh, if, I I think it depends on what they're actually able to provide for us. If they're only able to provide for us that the order has been accepted and is in queue to be manufactured, then we should say, okay, that's our twenty five percent of that down payment on the MAU. And we know exactly what the value of the um, of ATI's actual equipment is, so we should be able to do the math on that and figure out what their uh, what the balance should be, and they can bill for that remaining amount. If they come out and they say, um, their backup shows that the MAU is magically ready for for shipment. If they come out and they say their backup shows that the MAU is magically ready for, for shipment, you know, that's a different ballpark. Or they conversely, can't come up with any proof that they already even ordered the unit. And it's a non-starter. So we, we really have to see what they are able to give us as far as assurances that our backup area unit is going to be here on October sixth, like they keep on telling us, without any actual proof.
Right. So I, when I was searching around, just to make sure we hadn't, you know, somehow proved these invoices, but somehow they didn't get paid or whatever, I was looking through minutes, and then I checked a couple of meeting recordings I was trying to zip through, and Vinnie was on the meeting, so it was a while back. And I just happened to stop at a point when he was saying, well, Action Target's going to want to start delivering the range equipment, and of course, we had this whole discussion, which we've done several times, how, where, where do we put it? I understand they've got it all wrapped up and they're keeping it safe there, but as far as them delivering it here, getting it here is, and, and having it here is, where do we put, if we put it in the range, then, then they're stopping all over while they're putting in the infrastructure and all? I hope Action Target understands that, that we don't want to take this brand new equipment and have it stored improperly, and then they go to put it in place and.
Which brings us to our, our, our next player, which is Downs Construction. And really, you know, we, we need to be able to get these two parties, Action Target and Downs, in communication with each other, saying, you know, when is, when is the ideal time for Action Target's equipment to be delivered in order to avoid the situation I need to describe, Nancy? And in order to be able to do that, Downs has to have all of their subcontractors on board and really have a, a good feel of their order of operations.
So where are?
So we, I had a conversation with, with Anthony, who's our project manager over at Downs. And he says that he is getting at least two bids, he has at least two confirmed bidders for each project. For each, for each trade, I'm sorry. So that's good, we're, we're, so we're definitely getting at least somewhat competitive pricing. There's no RFIs as of yet, but they're still working with the bidders to actually get their numbers out. He's hoping that you'll have a preliminary GMP on, today is the twelfth. He said preliminary GMP on the twentieth Thursday. So that'll give us time to digest prior to the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, good. Because one of the things about getting the equipment inside is, you know, they have to bust the hole in the wall to bring the forklift in, and I don't want to bust the hole, and we've talked about this before, but we don't want to bust the hole in the wall. So we're ready to bring the stuff in, temporary cover, cover it, and then do the work that has to be done inside, and then get the forklift out of there and.
And, and that was a part of the conversation I had with Anthony, it's, you know, I, I did a, a schedule that made sense to me. It would show, you know, Downs doing some enabling work prior to Action Target arrival. But I said, you know, this is, I told him, this is my schedule, you do not have to abide by that in any way, and you should be working with your subcontractors to make sure that whatever you're doing, it makes sense. And once, once he has his actual subcontractors lined up, we'll get on the phone. You know, first thing we need to do is get on the phone, lay TI. Secondly, we need to do is get ESP and CES enrolled. So we, so we need to start getting all these parties going together.
Do some coordination meetings.
Right.
Okay, good. Anything else, anybody have any questions for Evan?
And John, one last thing, one up, last update for John, I, I am working with Eversource. I, I've had several conversations with my contact over at Eversource. It does look like our, our unit is going to qualify for, for some incentives. Which ones, which ones and how much that's actually going to amount to, they won't commit to at this point. But we, we're, we're working hand in hand, and, you know, we'll, we'll get all that sorted out prior to construction starting, hopefully.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks for bringing, thanks for sticking with that, John, that's, I kind of have a.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Evan or, so hopefully at the next meeting, we'll at least have some preliminary numbers on GMP. Be pushing for that. Good, and, and your schedule, Downs still kind of making it look like, at least in your conversations you've had, that we'll be ready for October.
Yeah, so we'll definitely be ready for October delivery, and that's really the, the pushback that, you know, I'm having with Downs. Is Downs is saying, oh, the MAU is going to be there October sixth.
Well.
Sorry.
That, that's the pushback I'm having with, with Downs to say, oh, the MAU is going to come in on October sixth, we'll be there, you know, October first. And I'm like, no, look at my schedule, we really need to make sure that you do this enabling work. You know, really, you know, make sure you're sinking your teeth into this schedule here. So, so we're, you know, I'm working with them.
Okay, good. All right, so we do have, if there isn't anything else, we do have an invoice. And this is again from STV for the month of September, twenty twenty two. So we'll do that. I make a motion that we approve invoice number nine zero zero two five nine three three, dated October thirteen, twenty twenty two, for the month of September, twenty twenty two, in the amount of one thousand five hundred and fifty four dollars and fifty cents. Got seconds from Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We are done. All right, so good, Evan, thank you for even pushing things because I think we really want to make sure we stay on that schedule as best we can. So I think that might be it, unless other people have other questions. I'm, I'm going to make a suggestion once we adjourn the meeting, you stop the recording, John Perna, David Horvath, I have questions for you because we have to update our contact info for the First Selectmen's Office.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Roy seconds, all in favor? All right, aye.
Aye.
Done, thank you, Evan, thank you, Mr. Durkin. Dave Horvath and John Perna, stick around just for a minute so you can stop the.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.
So John Perna.